Okay.
All right. So we have bids from two contractors.
Reputable contractors?
Reputable contractors. Personally, I would hire either of them. And so, I don't know that we need to do this this year. I'm not sure where we are for money on the town hall. So, before we do it, I would want to make sure how much we've spent because we still, I don't know that we, I don't know that the painting is done, is it? Jeremy?
I think they're done upstairs, but they're working on.
They still work on the hallway.
Oh, okay.
Are they, are they done in the hallway?
I have to check, I don't know for sure, but they were pretty close.
I know they're close, but. And then you have the.
Chrissy's.
The file room.
Yeah, they said they were doing that for free for painting. They said they were coming back for free. That's what they told Chrissy.
And I talked to the electrician today and he said he's gone back next week. They're ready for him to paint, uh, finish the, do the finished electrician here. So.
TJ, say it again.
Can we?
There's twenty-four hundred left in that building.
Twenty-four hundred.
I'm riverin' twenty-four thousand. It's only, only twenty thousand beginning of the fourteen.
Right?
Because the original plan is to do the remaining four main room windows.
Yes.
Which obviously is a lot cheaper than doing everything.
Well, I'd say do them all at once because it's not going to get any cheaper. Price of windows going up.
True.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm, I don't mind doing them either way. I guess.
One of the.
We're not, are we?
Yes, alive.
I know one of the contractors contacted me. And.
Both of the contractors contacted me.
Yeah. And they said to, to do it all of them now because it's going to be more expensive.
Later.
Later.
Oh, I certainly agree with that.
So I'm, so I'm reading through this, so we've got, there's ten double hung and one picture. Now, is that one, is that, because we did say we were going to seal off that back picture window. Right?
Is that what they mean by the picture window upstairs?
I'm guessing that's.
No, I think this is, this is side window, I think that's a different measurement of that.
Yeah, I wondered about, I didn't know what.
But Goulet's quote does include boarding up that back window.
Oh, because he says eleven plus that, okay. And that's.
Remove old back broken window facing the police department. Right. And I wonder if that's the.
Picture window. Yeah.
Mine is broken.
Oh, no. Yeah, that doesn't include it.
Yes, it's not.
So my question is, with both these.
Yeah.
So we got a quote for it, they're just, how many windows do we have up there that need to be replaced?
Eleven if you.
Eleven.
Oh, and the rest of it's the rest of them.
It's the random ones in the other rooms that are locked and closeted.
The bathrooms.
We never replaced them all.
There's four in the main room.
Yeah.
Four in the.
If you walk around the whole building.
Okay, what's the difference, for the top person's quote, what's the difference in the two things? Them are the different.
One is doing only four.
I think probably.
One is only doing four windows, the other one is doing all.
No, 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 I meant between Harvey and Interstate.
Well, what I'd say is, we would have to find out what windows the other Goulet was using.
Which he has here.
I think he's going to try to use the same ones.
Yes. He's got the sticker from the same ones that they were done in last one.
Yeah.
The email from the first company says he recommends Harvey just because they're better quality, I guess.
Yes. We don't, we don't know what, what, I mean, maybe Goulet bid them up based on Anderson or something, we don't know.
I think they're the Harvey with the same ones that they based, did all the other ones.
Okay, so that's the same as.
So this, whatever is up there right now is the same one.
Yep. Well, I, I agree with both contractors that we should stick with the brand that we have.
Right.
So.
And one of the, one of the quotes does include taking out that other one, boarding it up and sealing off.
Well, yeah, you can, that's, that's a five hundred dollar charge. Go down to the second contractor.
Ah, I see, we got it. So his would go down that much.
And presumably his would go up that much if that wasn't included. But I'm still curious about what the picture window is.
I think it's one on the right side if you're looking at town hall.
Where? They're all big double hung. Is there something in the back, like back by the stage? Or do you think it's back on the side?
There is one on the stairway going up, there's a window right there on each side. Unless it's the one above the emergency door.
Is there a window above that?
It's above it, yeah, small one.
Oh, maybe that's what it is. That would make sense because it's just a fixed piece of glass on the right.
Yeah, all the way right if I'm doing it. Goes out the main fire escape.
I don't know, I got a one.
Well, I would propose that we table a decision on this until our next meeting and we can get clarification. Unless we think we can do it tonight on what the windows are for the second bidder. And we go back and ask everybody if this is their absolute best price.
Also second.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of table it until we get that information?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll.
And we're designating Jeremy in charge of contacting the contractors and confirming that information.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Okay. So, other old business, we have the noise ordinance review. We want to put that on the docket to remove stuff. I looked through everything I basically could find. And it's basically what you want to do, remove the last article on, sorry, Article eight. And that's basically the actual desk reading because.
Correct.
That, I, I mean.
It's impossible.
Yeah. Oh, and then, so you're, so what you're saying, Jeremy, is replace Article eight with the new Article eight, which is the.
Yeah, just renumbered it.
Why is it safety signal warning devices? Safety sig, so sirens? Sirens. Or safety signals?
This is the revised ordinance in my hand, right?
This would, it would be revised, yeah.
Correct.
Taking out that part.
That whole section. And then, and so this is the renumbered, the exemptions are now Article eight versus ordinance level.
And I just added number ten to it. Based on that law.
So, we have to have a special town meeting, correct?
No, I don't think.
Or not town meeting, yeah.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, that's the words. Which we could do before our.
Next meeting.
Yeah. How about if we get.
I just wanted, before I.
I don't know if we can. Just public hearings, we have to be notified by law.
I, I would.
Time frame?
I, I want to. I want to put a plug in for roosters. There's a lot of people in this town that keep chickens.
That's agricultural.
Well, I'm, my concern is we're calling it a, that someone might define it as a domesticated animal. And they do go off when the sun comes up. And.
Activities related to farms, agricultural or farming as defined in, I think that would fall under agricultural farms or farming. Because that's under that new rule. Where they're basically exempt.
Should we add something here that specifically said, says this?
We probably should.
Yeah. This is, this, this explicitly includes cows and chickens. Because cows also move.
And other farm.
Yeah. Somebody might say, well, you're not really a farm, you just have one cow.
Well, farm animals.
So we'll put another exemption you would add in.
Yeah, I might add a line in there exempting.
So eleven calling out just specifically farm animals.
Right. Or we could put it in ten and saying, as paragraph, sub paragraph, it says, this specifically exempts chickens, roosters, and cows.
Goats, sheep.
Goats, sheeps, presidential settings.
I want to say something so bad, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, don't do that.
I think Dick understood exactly what I was talking about. That one. I want to look up what's in the, this law real quick.
Well, related to farms, agriculture, see, as defined in RSA twenty-one colon thirty-four A. So you want to see what the definition is there of because it might not include somebody who lives, lives in town and has chickens. Not long ago driver, what's that?
Oh, okay, so wait, it's not.
Just livestock.
It's not in twenty-one thirty-four A. That's town hall, a different thing.
How about thirty-one colon thirty-nine?
Twelve of them now. Purpose of penalties, that's about the most regulated noise from activities related to farms, agriculture and farming defined in.
Yeah, they still still have livestock.
Animals, preventing domestic animals roaming free in public places. It's essentially gives towns the authority to create bylaws in certain categories. So that's the rule that says we're allowed to make the rule.
Make this rule, okay. So if we could just add, if we could just amend this and have it say livestock.
Includes livestock under farm activities.
Right. Domestic livestock. Residential. Settings. Shall be exempt from this rule. This ordinance.
Oh, you had a printup of thirty-one thirty-nine here. Should've just told me, I wouldn't have looked up thirty-one thirty-nine.
I was going to be, I thought you enjoyed the challenge. All right, so I'm proposing that we amend this paragraph, item ten, under Article eight. And add in parentheses, domestic livestock in residential settings shall be exempt from this ordinance.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, second to amend that.
All right. All those in.
Aye.
Aye. So next, once we get that put up, we need to have the, excuse me.
That says down to Jerry, Jeremy, so you can just. I marked up the.
Okay. Do we know, do we know whether we want to do the hearing?
The hearing, I, I think we were, we were able to get it.
Yeah.
Seven days is all you need.
Yeah.
So we proposed for our next meeting.
For the start.
You're going to go to the next meeting.
Yeah. Posted it whenever time we start at. Now that we can have, bring in some folks who want to know why we're doing it, and that's because I'll tell them. I'll have my beautiful list of every violation that everybody in this town does for our noise ordinance.
Right.
Should be fun.
It's, it's sad, but that's what it is. Uh, next is.
Want to go back into the tax payments?
Oh, so yes, the tax payments, um, some were for the, three of them were for the town. And then, there is a whole plethora for the Society for Protection of the New Hampshire Forests. They were in the system under the wrong.
Right.
Exemption, they were put in there as a nonprofit.
Charity.
A charity instead of being a tax exempt.
So, I move, under four, item four J, motion to approve the tax payments for the Society of the Protection of New Hampshire Forests as follows. Map two, lots five and six, forms one thousand four for two hundred and seventy dollars. And one thousand five, one thousand five for five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Map three, lots one through seven, forms one thousand six for five eighty-three, one thousand seven for four eighty-seven, one thousand eight for ninety-five dollars. One thousand nine for four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Ten, one thousand ten for seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. One thousand eleven for two hundred and fifteen dollars. One thousand twelve for two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Map four, lots three, four, and seven, forms one thousand thirteen for seven hundred and ten dollars. Map one thousand fourteen for eight dollars, one thousand fifteen for twenty-seven dollars. Map five, lots thirteen, fourteen, and seventeen, forms one thousand sixteen for one thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. Form one thousand seventeen for one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. One thousand, form one thousand eighteen for four hundred and five dollars. Map six, lot eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, for one thousand nineteen for thirty-seven dollars. One thousand twenty for sixty-three dollars, one thousand twenty-one for ninety-five dollars. One thousand twenty-two for one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Map seven, lot eighteen, form one thousand twenty-three for seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. I further move that we approve the tax payment for the Troy redevelopment group as follows. Map thirteen, lot two, form one thousand twenty-four dollars for two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, map twelve and the town of Troy. Map twelve, lot three, form one thousand twenty-five for two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Map twelve, lot fifteen C, form ten twenty-six for three hundred and eight dollars. Map twelve, lot twenty-six, form ten twenty-seven for six dollars.
Any further discussion on that very long list? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was a long list, thank you for reading.
Sure, you said it.
All right, so, on to the next item, which is five C. The town security camera policy. Went through revisions, took out a bunch of repeat stuff and just didn't take nonchalant information that really didn't need to be in there. Read it by Dave, he didn't respond, but he kind of had the same notes that I did because I compared notes with Marley.
Yeah.
So.
I move that we approve the amended policy. Town security cameras. As submitted.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess that one, up and running. Next is five D, outdoor vendors and transient sales application. So southwestern advantage, this was the gentleman that came through, um, doing door-to-door, we're just following it up. He was on a time crunch and we didn't have a medium time. He has a dealer verification on here and all that. Just looking for approval so we can have another record that we approved it.
I move that we approve the application for Christopher Cartown to be issued a permit for the, in transient sales.
Two members.
Transient salesman, yep.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
And just so everyone knows, there are, you know, we have gone through and we've approved a few of these. And it's mostly been for these type of door-to-door salesmen of these sort of things. Any other ones have not really been approved that I've ever seen. We've done one other one before this and that was last year for basically the same thing. And they're selling for their school. Yes.
What about the spectrum internet guys?
They are not supposed to be going door-to-door, they did not get any approval from this town.
Only might want to know that.
Yeah.
They usually just call if you need your calls.
Yeah, I would think, I'm waiting for them to go to one of the officer's house.
I talked to one of them last night and they said they worked for Friday County, so. Maybe they don't know what town they're in. Just, they said they went to the police station and.
Oh.
We said they were.
Good to go.
Just because they tried to sell the police station, maybe they're good to go. I don't, I, Jeremy, if you don't mind looking into it and seeing if we have any other ones for them.
And check with Dave and see if he told somebody that he was good to go.
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the following manifest. Payroll for checks dated seven, lot twenty-four, the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Payroll dated seven, eight, of twenty-four, the amount of twenty-two thousand six ninety-three oh eight. And the reason for that jump is include the first week of summer camp. Payroll for the seven fifteen and twenty-four, the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that includes the fire department payroll. For accounts payable, uh, on June twenty-fourth, a check brought consisting of two hundred dollars. On June twenty-seventh, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. Which includes one hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents to the Banana Duck Regional School District. On July one, two hundred dollars. July three, one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, which includes a hundred thousand dollar payment towards the TAN note. Uh, July third, four thousand two hundred and ten dollars and sixty-four cents. July eighth, ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents. July eleventh, one hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three twelve, which includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the TAN note. July fifteenth, one hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents, which includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars paid off the TAN note. And includes a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Oh, no, that's, sorry, that's the next line down. It's, uh, July eighteenth, one hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. Which includes a one hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cent payment to Detroit. Tax collector for two hundred and twenty-three dollar tax lien execution money goes back into the general fund, this is a wash. Okay.
I'll second. Yeah, any discussion on that?
Well, I was going to make a comment about that.
Which part?
The hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dick, again, for reading it all.
I move that we approve the draft Troy Board of Selectments meeting for the public meeting minutes dated June second, twenty twenty-four at five fifteen P M.
I'll second.
I'll just make a caveat, June twentieth.
Do I say?
Your suggestion.
June twentieth.
All right, any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the non-public meeting minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. As submitted.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye. I move that we approve the meeting minutes of the special town meeting on June, public hearing for a special town meeting on June twentieth of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we have the minutes. Wait, tax collectors supplemental.
These are a couple of properties that weren't classified properly that need to be added to the tax roll.
Did we do that?
Do we have it?
Was that the, uh, former Catholic church on School Street? I'm just asking.
They actually pay their taxes?
Yeah, I heard that.
Oh, a miracle? It was this one that true to the act of concession. It's a whole four dollars total.
So we're, what do we give them?
Reclassifying them.
One was a subdivision that they only, it was supposed to split into three, they only split it into two. So one, one part was never created, so that was created, they got the tax bill now. The other one was, um, putting as exempt and it was changed over to council.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Go ahead, hear your motion.
Moves to approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just needed time so we can send them.
Yep, got it, thank you.
While we're in that neighborhood, where are we with getting our tax maps updated? Have we found a vendor to do that, Jeremy? It's under my report. Oh, we're going, we're still on your thunder.
We're on that topic now anyways, so.
Well, I know.
Um, yep, you'll see in your packet, a few different handouts. I met with the Vice President of CAI Tech, who we've used for years in most town halls. You might recall, I don't know if you were on the board too, but there was a discussion I found in that, I mean, it was three years ago, but twenty twenty-one, they came to the, came to the town and said, yep, we need to upgrade a GIS, it was ninety thousand. We never did.
Right.
So our options are, use them and upgrade the maps and eventual goals to go to GIS because everyone's doing it, that's the vendors you're required from. But we have quotes from CAI and Stand With Them or Avatar, and then I'm working with southwestern regional planning to see what they can do with.
Sure.
Either way, it's going to cost. If we want to do that, great, GIS is going to cost so many that we didn't decide before.
Well, I still feel I'd rather pay twenty-two hundred dollars to update the map than ninety thousand dollars. Wonderful as I'm sure.
So, so the deal with CAI has been, and Mary had this deal, is basically begging him to.
C A I.
Yeah.
I thought you said T A I.
C A I. So they sent a letter in twenty eighteen, then twenty nineteen, that was twenty twenty-one. So they basically don't want to, want to update our maps forward unless we do upgrade. Is there an answer to the regular P D F format? So he said, off the record, it was supposed to be the letter, it's not. If we want to go that route, not make a decision on upgrading right now, since we've paid them twenty-two hundred dollars for multiple years now, they'll go back and do those updates. And cut off all the way to show, and we'd have to decide.
At, at like twelve thirty-one?
Well, I think what we need to do is we need to keep going because they're supposed to do it for the rest of this year. And we'll tell them, we need to get the town approved before we spend ninety thousand dollars.
Right, but there's other options, he doesn't even think we should do the ninety thousand dollar option.
Okay.
He recommends the second one down there. And actually Avatar's pricing, I think, is a little bit better.
Okay.
We don't have to decide on that.
Do we have Avatar's pricing in here?
Yeah, it's on the, it's in their letter and it's on the summary sheet in here.
All right, so they, if I understand, I see it's on page two. Yeah, that's a way better number.
Yeah, that, uh. CAI recommended probably their second level option, which is still forty-two thousand dollars.
The on-screen, parcel, digital.
So the Avatar quotes include them upgrading us to GIS.
Well, isn't Avatar doing our system?
Yeah, this is a separate arm of their business.
No, no, I know, but.
Yeah. But Winchester uses that for their maps.
Yeah, I know. Uh, and they do a nice job, so. I guess my question is, I have more questions now than I started out with. If I understand you correctly, C A I will honor the money that we paid them and correct our maps.
Yep.
Through the end of this year.
End of this year. And that would be contingent on us just giving them the list of changes.
The list of, well, we can do that.
Right.
It's not that many.
And then they, they take that and they verify it with the registry to make sure that it's.
Right. So that's, that seemed like the most practical in the short term.
Which you've already paid for, right?
Because we've already paid for it.
So we've been paying for it.
Right. Right.
So basically he warned us for years and we just had to take it.
Well, just we got distracted with other things. So, right, so we're going to, so the answer is, we're going to do that. But now we have to look, we're wait, we need to wait to get the quote back from southwestern. And then we can pick between that and Avatar. Is that correct?
Yep, unless you want to go stick with C A I with another option.
Well, we may want to do that too, but we really can't make that decision.
Right, yep. Yeah, that's not depressing, we just want to get the map.
So, come back to my original question, which is, if we're going to do the stick with. So, come back to my original question, which is, if we're gonna do this, stick with C A I through the end of this year, what are they gonna update these maps?
I'll have to reach back out and see what they tell me.
Okay. You know.
I don't know when their cutoff date is, we know we have done this.
Because any subdivisions that you have, or changes, would have been, a survey would have been done and submitted.
Apparently, there's a way in our software to go on there.
You don't have a real subdivision if you don't.
The assessing software apparently can spit on a report which helps.
Cool.
Is that why we're not?
Yeah. So you, so you're gonna do this, you're gonna, what, what's your timeframe for resolving this?
Well, I mean, I'll reach back out to them and see what. Like, I don't know when they cut off their updates.
Well, I don't think this is.
If they want it all twenty twenty-four, we'd be, you know, we'd still want some.
But we didn't want all twenty twenty-four, I can twenty twenty.
But we could do, yeah, we could do three years now.
We should get current where we are right now, yeah.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them and tell them what to do.
Because I don't think you have that many changes.
Right. Yeah, he doesn't.
You, you, you might have a dozen.
Yeah, he said ten to twelve a year, maybe, if that.
That would be a lot.
Yes.
I'm just thinking about what we've seen come through. Okay. And then that takes me to my next question about where I went with property cards. Is that your report?
Um, so then I'm still waiting to hear back, I need to follow up and then we can get on it, so. I know there's other towns that are added to their list that are being updated for us, so.
Yeah. All right, and then I'm gonna go back to the one you said over. Deputy, uh, what's the story about it, all Brian goes donation requests?
So Chief, um, reached out to me, they helped teach a class at the Cheshire Career Center.
Yeah.
And I guess they tried this before, and for some unknown reason, the key and the school boards said no, but they want to offer to donate the ambulance to them, and they would literally park it there and work, then it like ends on.
Yeah.
But, if you, even if you said yesterday, it's again pending there.
Well, I would, and, and Mark is good with this?
Yeah, he helps teach and everything.
Well, so I would move that we offer to donate it to C B C.
I'll second. Okay, my only caveat is, we aren't gonna pay the insurance, if we donate it, it's theirs to.
It's theirs, it's not ours anymore, right?
Because that's my biggest thing, is, that's probably why they denied it the last time, was because probably they were thinking we wouldn't pay the insurance, but if they, they want it as a vehicle like that.
Well, it's not gonna be a vehicle anymore.
It's gonna be a truck, yeah. If they want to use it as a training thing, I got no problem with that.
Yeah.
Because it's.
We're gonna, we're gonna hand them the title here, it's not mine anymore.
We give maybe five thousand dollars, because looking at.
Maybe, it's not even, I looked at that, the warrant says the less it's worth.
Yep, so I, I, I had no problem with that. Uh, that was my caveat, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is the, what's this?
Can you add a public service org update? What's that, Jeremy?
Oh, yep, uh, you guys asked about the final payments, they hadn't invoiced us, so. But, um, we just did the final check on all those, and it's all been on.
And that's the interest that's being paid next week is?
The TAN.
Yep, so the TAN, all the, all the principals paid it off, and today we have the final number.
Oh, so that's the last bit of work, that's all we have to pay.
That's the interest that's left, yeah.
Oh, that's working awesome.
That's not bad.
We actually had kind of checked, and we said, oh, we had to process last one, yes, the number change, it'll make a, it's like fifteen million. It'll be, it'll be paid off.
Yeah, they don't, you know how long it takes the bank to write a fifteen dollar check for you? I have had it done. They, they, they like to drag their feet. And then they pay you interest on it.
Yeah.
And then this is, this is just the, the backup for that? The next thing?
Yep.
All right, and then this last one is support for public services. Did we finally get everyone paid on that?
Yep, on that.
Oh, good. And we've, that's got the new one, which is the very last one, right? The development. That was the one that the town voted to add?
Yes. Uh, I had an interesting conversation, one of, with one of the Manchester Alderby, uh, on Tuesday. And so we, uh, you know, we, we have our issues with Hundred Nights because they're taking, the state's sending people there from Manchester. Well, Manchester has had a homeless shelter, and they took money from the feds. So the feds are dumping people there, so their homeless people are being forced out of their own shelter. And their complaint is exactly the same as ours, which is, these aren't even our people.
Where are they getting people from? Massachusetts?
Apparently.
They play hot potato?
Yeah.
Manchester, Nashville, and people from Vermont and Massachusetts.
Say that again.
Vermont and Massachusetts, generally Nashville and.
Oh, so we're taking people from other states in our state. I said Maine, because that's the side of the state, so. Okay. All right, uh, do we need another non-public gentleman?
I don't either.
All right, then I will entertain motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn, adjoint.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So seven fifty-nine, we adjourn. Thank you and good night.